Good evening and welcome tonight to the County Commissioners Meeting. At this time, I want to call Reverend Randy Swearingen to the podium. Mr. Swearingen, before you provide our invitation, I would just like to mention the passing of Ms. Brenda Ratliff, who worked for the town of Weidsborough for numerous years. She also worked for the Anson County Courthouse from 96 to 2020. And she is currently retired or was retired as an assistant clerk. If you see her passing this past week, if you could remember her in prayer.
Let's pray. God, we just come to you right now. In the name of Jesus, we love you so much. And Lord, for this lady's family that just passed away, God, we just want you to just to comfort them and be with them. And God, just give them a peace that passes all understanding that you can give them. And God, if there's anything we can do for them during this time, God, would you reveal it to us through the Holy Spirit or through friends? God, I ask you to be with this county. God, I pray that, as it says up down the wall, that we put our trust in you. And Lord, I pray right now that you just pour your spirit out on this county and that, God, that people that are in the midst of darkness, Lord, to be able to see the light. God, help us be the light and the salt that we need to be to our neighbors and friends. And God, I pray for these commissioners tonight, Lord, and the clerk and everyone else that's here at this Commissioners Meeting. I pray, Father, first of all, that you would just keep your hand upon them. And Lord, they took time away from their families to come and do the county's business. And Lord, would you just touch them and be in their thoughts, be in their decisions? And Lord, I just pray that everything that they do bring honor to you. And I pray that their decisions will be in the best interest of the citizens of Anson County. Now, God, we just love you and we thank you and we praise your holy name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will move to item one, approval of the agenda. So do I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gatewood, second by Commissioner Little Reed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I would like to add just a couple items.
Okay.
Under the management report.
Okay.
There's four already there. And I doubt one that is a contract for the jail.
Okay.
And also one to discuss the planning director's position and salary range.
Okay, so at the manager's request, we'll add item seven D, jail contract, and seven E, planning director position. So those changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Thank you, sir.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gatewood, second by Commissioner Little Reed. All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, item two, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Gatewood?
Chairman, we need to remove item two A. We don't have any tonight.
Okay, so we're going to remove item two A. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item two A.
I'm seconding.
Okay, have a motion to approve consent agenda, removing item A by Commissioner Gatewood, second by Commissioner Little Reed. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Nannus. All right, moving along to item three, appearances. First up, we have Mr. Tim Zing with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company, our audit report.
Yes, sir. All right, good evening, Owen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Zung and I'm a certified public accountant with the CPA firm Thompson, Price, Scott and Adams. I'm here to present to you the fiscal year 2023 audit. And first off, well, great news. Just talked to the county manager earlier on. Your audit has been approved by the LGC Local Commissioner, uh, Local Government Commissioner last night. So your 2023 is on our back. And we are currently working on your 2024 audit planning. And we have full intention to bring that on time. So this will be the first time in five years, in the most recent five years, that your audit has a chance to be on time. So that's, I want to acknowledge Holly Berry, the finance director, and also John Sharp, the consultant here. Also, our firm, it was definitely team efforts to bring the audit up to date. 2022 was a little bit shaky, but 23 was really smooth sailing. And I've been on your account since 2021. So for 2021, 22, 23, we were able to accomplish three audits in the most recent 14 months. So that's really something to acknowledge. And I believe my supervisor, Mr. Alan Thompson, was here in February to present 22 audit. And so glad to be here to present 23 audit in only three months. You have two binders in front of you, the big one being your audit and financial statements, smaller one being the presentation summary that I'm going to be used for the majority of this night. If you have any questions to our firm, Holly Berry have our contact information. You're welcome to send me an email, call Alan, and we'll have some answer for you. Not only tonight, but if you go home, flip through these papers. It's a good read, that means a hundred forty pages. So, when questions, we'll be glad to answer that for you. So if you're currently not, flip to page one of the smaller binder. This is the letter of communication that we're obligated to communicate with the board at the conclusion of the, uh, conclusion of the audit, meaning that you hired us to do your audit and we finished our job. We issued a unmodified opinion, that's the highest audit opinion you can get, quote unquote, clean report. That means we don't, uh, we don't express any opinion on the fairness of the audit statements, financial statements. For this year, we implemented Gatsby 96 subscription. That's a new standard that Gatsby government accounting standard board issued for 2023. Basically, it introduced a new accounting method to record your speed of subscriptions. As a start, we have, in home, we have subscription to Netflix, Amazon, whatnot. Your government actually subscribes, subscribes to certain software. For this year, we're changing the accounting method to record that. We encountered no difficulties dealing with the management in finishing the audit. In page two, if you can finally flip over, under the subtitle, Other Audit Fundings and Issues. For this year, we have issued four fundings. First one being the reconciliation of records. This goes in hand in hand. We have a late audit, which is funding number three. And number four being the late submission to the federal agency. That also goes in hand in hand. Second funding is the budgetable violation. This will be a really small amount compared to last year. So we have full intention to eliminate all four fundings if we are able to bring your 24 audit back on time. So that's good news. And there's some Medicaid funding from social service and pretty much all the counties get these fundings. Medicaid is just in itself a really complicated system. But there's definitely room for improvement. Page four, page three is just legal verbiage.
Sir, can you hold on just one second? I just got a text that says we're not live streaming.
It's right here, he sticks it in.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to wait for that or, I mean, I can definitely wait for that.
How long do you think it'll be?
No.
Sure.
But we do have the audio.
Yeah, I think we need to continue. We do have audio, we just don't have laughter.
If we need to have the audio.
All right.
Yes, great.
That took some pressure off me. I know it's live streaming. As long as we're offline, it's much easier for me at least. Page four, we, it's our customary to for five years, what's of important data side by side. So you can see the up and go, up and down, the trending here. So first item here being the 2023, your total fund balance over $29 million. And if you combine, if you compare that to the previous four years, you will see that's the highest amount of most recent five years. That's a resounding number, means you're, you have enough fund balance in your general fund to spend. Cover down, cover lines down there, you can see the assigned restricted, I'm sorry, the assigned fund balance being, sorry, the general fund expenditure being $39 million. And that's also been the highest among the most recent five years. Everything just went up and inflation caused that cost to be, to be up. And you most recently have adopted the 24 budget that went up by five percent as well. So your revenue continued to be going up as well to cover the cost. The fund balance as a percentage of the general fund expenditure is roughly 60%. And LGC considers eight percent is the lowest threshold. But that covers your month, one month worth of expenditure. So at 65%, I would say that's a really healthy number compared to eight percent. Down there, you can see your total fund balance and cash comparison. Cash position is also among the highest in the most recent five years. So financially speaking, your fund balance and your cash position is really healthy. Tax rate collection rate is 94.51% this year. Small improvement compared to last year, but the general average statewide is roughly 98%. So there's definitely room for improvement for tax collection. Page six here, starting from this page, we will have some charts presented to the board. Top chart here shows your analysis of your fund balance. The blue chart, blue bar shows your total fund balance and red one shows your restricted ones. So the only increase in restricted fund balance this year was due to the $7.9 million appropriation to the next year's budget. And if you continue that appropriation for the 2024, you will see that restricted fund balance going up, but the remaining of fund balance still available for budget. Bottom here, you will see a comparison to the group weighted average. This data is published by the state and they stopped doing this in 2021. So you will see a note here, 22 and 23 data is not available. And going forward, they're, they have no plan to issue this data going forward. So probably in three years, we'll eliminate this page in our presentation. But for now, we'll just give a comparison that at least our weighted group, our percentage is above the group weighted average statewide. Page seven here, you can see analysis of your assigned fund balance. Again, and not 29.54%, we're still above eight percent threshold. They don't really consider this as a requirement, but they do, if you dip below eight percent, they will issue something for you. So bottom chart here shows the analysis of revenue overall under expenditures. Basically, this is your profit and loss analysis for lack of better word. For 2023, there's a little bit dip in general fund and went up in water and sewer department. So the majority of the wastewater department is because of sludge removal project. But that project, as it talks about, is finished in 2024. So for this year's audit, we're going to see that number going up definitely. Page eight here, you can see a comparison between your cash and community depreciation. This is something that LGC issued this year. They look at the community depreciation of all your fixed assets and do a ratio analysis. And they found that for most units in North Carolina, majority of their fixed asset has either been fully depreciated or mostly depreciated. So they are considering that if the fixed asset is fully depreciated, that means they have met, I'm sorry, they have met their life. So you may have a chance to replace them sooner. So they are concerning that you may have to contribute asset and revenues to expenditures on fixed asset. So they, which is presented here to, for a comparison, you don't really have a lot of fixed asset purchase, but your depreciation is just steady going up, it's a straight line procedure. Bottom here, you will see a comparison of your, between your cash and fund balance. Again, among the highest in the most of five, most recent five years. That's really healthy. Page nine here, it shows your comparison of your tax rate compared to the group weighted average. Again, they stopped issuing this data after 2021. Now that's where above the group average here. Our collection is below the state average. Again, the state average roughly 98% for the tax collection. Especially for counties, you're all to collect more tax rate. And that will, if you turn to page 11, you will see the majority of your revenue, almost half of your revenue, general fund came from added value tax. So tax revenue is basically the bloodline for local governments. That's why we cannot emphasize the importance of tax collection rate. In 2023, you have ARPA money. In 22, you have COVID money in combating of the COVID-19 pandemic. But after this pandemic, your federal expenditure is going to be dropping, it's going to be dropped. And state expenditure is going to be dropped as well. So you don't really have a lot of grant resources as much as we have in 22 and 23 in combating COVID-19. Bottom chart here on page 11 shows your breakdown of your fund balance expenditures. General government, education, human service, public safety, still the big four of your expenditures. That really aligns with your last year analysis and align with other counties. Page 12 here, this is the important as note here. If you take away anything from this presentation, it'll be page 12. So from 2021, the LGC stopped issuing the unit letter. They made the auditors do the audit work and issued this so-called FPSA, the Financial Performance Indicator of Concern. So for this year, they have identified five concerns that you have to respond. This is, these are not necessarily our findings, but they may have some overlaps. The first one being your audit is late and we may have some improvement in 24 audit. Second one being your operating net loss in the water and sewer fund. Again, that's due to the project of sludge removal and we fully anticipate that go away in 24. Third one being the capital asset condition ratio is the one I just talked about, the concern regarding the fixed asset along with the community depreciation. Every, most of our, most of our clients got this funding this year. Third one being the budget violation, that's including our findings. And fifth one being the, we have some material weaknesses and significant deficiencies findings. In 24, we do anticipate at least three out of five going away. So again, cannot stress the importance of audit being on time. And again, shout out to Holly Berry and her department for the cooperation with the auditors. And it, it has been, I mean, Anson County was assigned to me personally in 2021. And it was really personal to me to bring you, bring you back on track. So 24, your comes still under my control. So I will work with Holly to bring your audit. And hopefully, our anticipated completion date will be October 31st of this year. And that's on time to LGC, so make everybody happy. And if you have any questions, now would be the time.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sharp, you may, or either one of y'all may know the answer. When our final audit is completed and on time, what is the period of time before we're eligible to have full grant and bonding and things like that? Is it, there's like a probationary period that we have to wait for?
We just discussed that about a half an hour ago. So based on what Donna said, you, as long as your audit is current, LGC will allow you to borrow that. So we don't consider your 23 audit being on time just because it's still year old information. But if we get your 24 audit by October 31st, that would be the day. So you're starting to consider that kind of thing.
Wow, okay, great.
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
And Donna, in her presentation, she will have more information on that regards.
Ms. Berry, that just puts the pressure on you. October 24th. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Zing?
Yes, sir.
Just like to say, we appreciate the, the expeditious way that you guys performed this one.
Yes, sir.
And then by seeing that you'd get the next one that's going to be finishing up June 30th and get this, 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 you're completed. You'll get that one done by October 31st. We'll be back hopefully in a, in a really good crisis at the LGC.
Yes, I, and our firm work with over 100 local governments every year. So expertise is definitely there. We just need to work with the staff to get information out. And we're blinded by so many different regulations and requirements that we have to reconcile. We got enough audit, audit evidence to say that we're confident with the report and issue our report.
And you said earlier that it was awesome that we'd be able to complete essentially three audits within a 12-month timeframe?
14 months.
14 months. What the heck, too much.
Well, I mean, person, I mean, that's a personal record for me. I believe it's a record for the firm to be able to complete three audits within under a year and a half. And we were talking about this earlier in Holly's office. And although it's a record nonetheless, but we want our audit to be on time. We want to have more time working on the audit. So for this year, beginning in June next month, we're going to sending out the information to Holly and work with her. My team is consisting of three auditors, working with her from all the way to June to August. And we're fully intent to having this to be on time.
Well, yes.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
We certainly appreciate the hard work you put into our county and we thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thanks so much.
And that goes for Ms. Sharp as well. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Sharp, do you have anything to present? I know you were not on the agenda, but.
Good afternoon. Donna Sharp from the North Carolina Association County Commissioners. So greetings. It was March of last year when me and my colleague Amy Cannon came here and shared with you information on how NCACC could support you. And I'm here to say, I think Holly hasn't needed nearly as much support as we thought because she's a little dynamo. I've worked with mostly counties who are late on their audits. And I will tell you, Anson has by far done more than any of the other counties in becoming current. And I really have to attribute that a lot to Ms. Berry and her tenacity in getting the day-to-day records current, because your day-to-day records are current, which is the most single important thing to making sure your audit gets done on time. I have to commend Thompson Price. I work a lot with Thompson Price on these counties with late audits. And they have a heart for really making sure that they can get in and help you get things turned around. And last year, Mr. Thompson spoke about, you know, doing, when a smaller county, when a smaller government gets behind on their audits, it's not that hard to turn it around. But when a county gets behind, it's like turning a battleship. And I really do feel like your battleship has turned. It's pointed in the right direction. And it's taken a lot of leadership and a lot of late nights and weekends on, by Holly to really get this work done and her team and her staff. But, and having seen the, the records improve over the last year, the reduction in the number of journal entries, the timeliness of the reporting, I agree with Mr. Zing that you are very well poised to get your 24 audit done on time as long as Holly can keep her staff, keep the assistants from the external CPA firm working with her. But y'all are really be, y'all are to be commended for making that a priority for your government because it is a very important thing. And it's difficult for you to make long-term decisions and annual budget decisions without having current information. So I, I know that it's important to get the audit done on time, but it's very, but it's just as important for you all to have current information for your decision-making. And it's been a pleasure to work with Holly over the last year. And the NCACC will continue to be here to support her through getting this 24 audit current.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you again, Ms. Sharp, for everything that you have helped with the staff. We certainly appreciate it and thank everything that the association does to assist. So we thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Okay, I think one of the best takeaways from that is not only do we get the audit completed, but we're improving on the deficiencies that we have within the audit.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, in 24, those deficiencies continue to get better. Okay. All right, next up on our appearances, we have Mike Sessions and Chris Harrington for utility report.
We just wanted to bring y'all up to date on some of our projects and where we're at. I think most of you know, but the Highway 74 sewer line installation, we found out Friday, is 75% complete. The sewer leak, the repair will be complete in three to four weeks. He told Chris and I Friday that it's just waiting on some materials. And the ridge path, water line is 75% complete. The SCADA at the plant is complete. With the SCADA, as we upgrade at the plant stuff, more stuff will be added to that. I mean, that'd be ongoing forever. Field of rehab, we're still in the planning stage. We, I guess it was three, two or three weeks ago, they'd met with Lynn and Chris and Amy and myself. And they got all the plans for both sides. We are, we were advised to look at some, an electrical contractor on a quarterly basis to come and check the plant. And we've got prices, we're still obtaining quotes. We've got prices from one. And we'd like to get at least three prices. And that's taking a little more time than we thought, of course, to get companies down here to, to take a look at. Because apparently, they have plenty of work to do right now. The wall demolition that's downstairs, Lynn's, Lynn knows about, about it. We got three prices on it. And we finally awarded it to Underwood last week, not that seat, $8,800 plus tax. It was, the other two companies were almost $20,000 higher. So, and then this is just something I put on there because some, sometimes they're interested. And I might be a little short on this. Chris would know better than me. But last year, Chris's guys put in, it's really closer to 100 tax, I think. I got 90 tax down. That's the three quarters inch, one inch and two inches.
And that's in the last year?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for our utilities director?
Yes, sir. I talked, I spoke with Nick yesterday and he's doing a really good job of mapping all the hydrants. And I know being that that's a water department function, I think that's going to be really helpful. And I'm sure y'all are way ahead of me on that, knowing what he's doing. But it seems like he can get within three feet of every hydrant on that map. And what I was hoping is, I know we, we want to get flow rates and all for those. But, and I know flow rate and diameter have a lot to do with each other. But I think the way he can set that up is each one of them will kind of be identified. And then I think you can click on something and it'll tell you eventually flow rate and whether it's a four inch or a six inch and things like that. So I'm real excited about, you know, getting that information. And then I guess whenever we do, whatever type of condition assessment we're looking at, it'll be a lot more, I think it'd be great for, if a department were to come into another district, they can look at that and see what flow rates are and say, hey, you know, there's five different hydrants within the vicinity of this fire, but we got an empty truck and this one here's got a much higher flow rate. So I think, I appreciate all the work that you all are doing to help with that, so.
The flow rate should, in close proximity, shouldn't be a lot different, should increase.
Not in close proximity.
Not if they're in close, but I'm saying if you have one line that spurs off, like, you know, you, you got some transition areas. So to me, like you say, of course, all the ones on that one line have a similar flow rate and all something's wrong. But there's some transition areas where if you went a half mile this way, you might have a much better, up in Burnsville, I know, because we've got some lesser quantity pipes up that way. So there he is. I was just talking about what a great job you're doing on that hydrant mapping.
I think up there, I'll, I don't, have we got anything ever six? I don't think we do, do we?
About eight going to Burnsville.
And then it's most of six. That's the, you know, that's where the issue comes in.
That's the limiting factor on water pressure, water flow.
Yeah.
That's where that comes in.
I know some of the confusion is pressure versus volume and we need the volume.
Well, and you know, you know, too, one thing I found out since I've been here working, one thing, it, they were not, this was before all our times, they were not put in raw, but we didn't have all the chicken houses.
And I know they're, and I'll guess when they're running order, everybody's pressure goes down. Thank you.
Okay. I personally am glad to see that we are getting some projects completed at the plant, some sewer line completed, you know, we've waited. lines completed. You know, we've waited a long time to get that started, and I think they've been working for three weeks now, so I'm glad. It doesn't take long once you start.
It's amazing. I was really shocked, I don't know if you were, I was shocked when they told me 75% Friday. And they didn't even get to work any down there last week.
That's what I was gonna say, I think they're going on three weeks, and it's rained for two of those three weeks.
So, they're going through it pretty good.
Okay. I know some of these projects have been, I don't know if you want to say neglected, or put on the back burner for several years, so I'm glad to see that we're finally making some headway on, making some improvements at our plant.
And hopefully, we'll have the money to keep pushing.
Well, if we can get the audit back up to today where it needs to be, I think that's going to help everybody, too.
Be a lot more eligible, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you mind if they briefly explained how SCADA's going to really improve our water system here? Because I mean, that, I think that improves the entire...
It, that must improve the water system. What it does is improves our ability to look at and operate everything. They can operate it from, they can look at our water tank. So, I guess you can say it improves the water system. They can look at, they don't have to send somebody, or Chris sent somebody on, call somebody in to go look at a tank if everything's online. And, and so, and you know, that's something that we've worked on the last two or three years. We had somebody from up north coming, but we just were not getting anywhere. And when we got CIT on it, probably cost a little more, but they got the job done.
That's rather huge for y'all's ability to manage it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And all the warnings and everything, you can know what's going on way before, like now, sometimes several days go by, and then somebody calls in or whatever, but you'll get to see right away, lifetime, you know, something's going on. And I think it's going to be great.
All right. Anything else for utilities?
Well, we had a long meeting yesterday, as us Mike and Chris know, on another aspect of our water system, and that's moving forward in the planning spaces as well. And the good news is, is that with that particular project, that's why I was glad to see the audit tonight, because that will allow us to secure a loan to at least pay for, which will be forgiven, to pay for at least 60% of the costs for that work. And had it, had we not been called up, you know, it was, if we could have applied for it, but now we can.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why the audit is key to anything we do as the county government.
That, that is, I was thinking about that earlier in the meeting. That particular project is not going to be completed until Chris can correct me, because he can remember better than me, but it's 2035, isn't it?
35.
35. It's the lead copper. So, there's different sections of it.
Yeah.
And it's, it could, and we still don't know what the EPA is going, or quite everything they're going to require, but...
Okay, that's the lead service line replacement?
And we talked about yesterday, it's, and also from a GIS standpoint, Nick was involved in the meeting with the engineers because of locating the different lines and systems. But that's what it is. And it's, they're still writing the rules and regulations, as Mike just said, the EPA is. So, like I said yesterday, it's kind of like flying an airplane while you're trying to build it. It's not the most comfortable thing in the world to do, but we have no choice. It's a federal mandate.
Yes.
I hope there's going to be more money coming from the federal government to help with this, because it's their mandate, and, and just our first part's a million dollars.
It's going to be rather expensive, to my understanding.
Yeah. And, and you know, everything's proportioned, even with us, a million dollars is a lot, but you got a small town.
Ansonville.
And whatever theirs is, is going to be a lot to them, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for utilities? All right. Well, I certainly appreciate the report. Thank you, thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work you're doing.
Well, it's them. They're good. They, they, they work hard.
Yes, sir.
I'll figure out when we get, get it, get it fully staffed. That, I mean, that's everybody's issue.
Yes, sir. So, that's across the board. It don't matter if you're in Anson County, or North Carolina, or the US.
Or what job.
That's right. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item, moving on to item four, public addresses to the board. So, I'm going to read the statement here to begin with. There shall be a time set aside at each regular meeting of the board for public comment. Each citizen who wishes to speak during this time must sign up on a sign-up sheet prior to the start of each meeting. Each citizen shall be allowed three minutes for their presentation. All citizens are expected to follow proper decorum and shall not use profanity nor defamatory speech. The public is expected to remain seated except when leaving the room. Only presenters listed on the agenda or recognized by the chairman will be called to the podium to address the board. Commissioners are expected not to comment on matters brought to the board during this time, but to delay action or comment until staff has had an opportunity to research the subject matter and to report necessary and relevant information to all members of the board. So, this time, I'm going to call Mr. Lula Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Caldwell, Anson County Board of Commissioners, thank you for your time. I would like to speak again regarding human, the human resources of the county, specifically the DSS employees. As of today, DSS has spent 75% of its salary line item. I would like for the Board of Commissioners to consider a motion to allow lapped salary to be used to give a one-time bonus to DSS employees equivalent to two pay periods per employee for on payroll as of 6/30/2023, and a 2.5% of gross salaries bonus for employees hired after July 1, 2023. In the absence of the employee staff, staff have worked extremely hard to meet the needs and requests of the citizens of Anson County, and should be acknowledged for their hard work. Staff have met performance measures, satisfactorily met program audit requirements, has had no county paybacks, and has kept adults and children safe in Anson County. As you are aware, DSS signs a biannual memorandum of agreement, a written agreement pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes, Section 108A. In compliance with the mandates of laws enacted by the General Assembly, DSS must satisfy the mandated requirements, or the Department of Health and Human Services may withhold state and/or federal funding. Mandated programs such as energy programs, workforce programs, food and nutrition services, child welfare, including protective services, foster care services, and adoption services, adult protective services, guardianship services, special assistance, child and family service reviews, subsidized childcare programs, and also ensure that staff are trained and prepared to engage in mass shelter operations. For all economic services, the county must process 95% of all applications within a one-day to 45-day timeframe dependent on the program. Complete recertifications within 30 days. For service programs, 95% of all foster care children must have face-to-face contact each month. 85% of adult protective services reports must be completed within a 30 to 45-day timeframe. 85% of special assistance applications must be processed. In the child support section, 50% of cases must have paternity established, and 50% must have a support order. 40% collection rate is required for active cases and arrears cases. Medicaid is not currently a part of the MOU, and that's primarily because of all of the moving parts in Medicaid. So, but they are a part of four audits that they have to do, including the single county audit, the Rita audit, Franklin versus Kenley, and Alexander and Flaherty. For this program alone, cases under guardianship or younger children with severe, cases under guardianship are now younger with severe mental illness, and custody cases for child protective services involves older children with behavior issues. Based on the time, and I practiced this, and I still didn't get it done in three minutes, but I'll close by saying, I would like for the Board of Commissioners to consider the salary increase, I mean, the bonus, to consider the lapped salary funds to provide a one-time bonus to DSS employees. The Board of Commissioners have allowed the use of lapped salaries to obtain, retain, and/or maintain staff in other departments. This would be an ongoing expense, this would not be an ongoing expense, and would not be a part of the 2024 budget request. I do plan to appear on the June 4th agenda to make an official presentation and to request the motion, but if there are any questions regarding anything that I've asked on today, or you need further clarification, just feel free to contact me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for that presentation. All right, next, we have Christopher Borgstedt.
I have props. Can I hand them out?
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Borgstedt, just for clarification, we did just get our live stream fixed, just for everyone to know. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, God, my anxiety. So, I've just handed out two items to each of you. One of those, I can, as far as environmentalists are concerned, ethically use in my garden. The other one leaves behind microplastics, which is a growing problem, apparently. One of those, also, the raw material can be found in Anson. The other one, well, you got to drill. Bioplastics. These are made from wheat straw, which I'd say Anson has in spades right now, and every year. So, let's say get familiar with Chapter 158. Sorry, notes. Okay. North Carolina, Chapter 158, because what I'm hearing is that Anson has drive without opportunity, okay? A battleship in need of a heading. Right now, it's more like an organized excuse for bums to stay bums. There's a way to change it. North Carolina has empowered the counties to change their own fate. It's empowered them to form corporations, to build factories, to create jobs. There are a lot of problems with that, a lot of fears and concerns. I'm working on something to address that, but I just wanted y'all to know what, what the future looks like. I bought a six-person set of dishes for $25 from China. I wish I could have bought it from the United States. I need a billion of these zip ties every year. I wish that the Tims that get dropped off that don't have to be policed, so that, you know, it doesn't hurt the environment. I want jobs. I want prosperity. And more than that, I want bioplastic zip ties, so we'll talk. Thank you. I will want the silverware back. Y'all can keep the zip ties up.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Borgstedt. And I do have a lot of wheat straw, by the way.
I want to make it more valuable. I want to make it so that you have two harvests.
All right, that concludes our public addresses to the board. Next, we'll move to item five, our appointments. We have the Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board, and I believe in our packet, they already have, they have listed the three candidates for that appointment. So, this time, I entertain a motion to appoint, or approve a motion to appoint these three candidates, Ms. Christina Horton, Ms. Lula Jackson, and Ms. Angela Careway to the Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board.
I make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the three candidates to the workforce board, by Commissioner Brickin, second by Commissioner Gaywood. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right, moving right along, item seven, managers' report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's, in your package, there's a few things. One of them, the first one is HR policy changes during our recent workshops, if you will. I had three commissioners in one, three in another, and there was discussed different HR policies and changes. One was a bereavement leave of absence, if you will, that most everyone, I think, was in favor of. Another one, if you recall, was the recommendation from Judge Retrell, that instead of putting in that camera system at this time, at courthouse, that we, that we hired three new deputies to be assigned here downtown, particularly for the courthouse. Talked about a planning director position, and that one under E is what I thought I did at the last time, but apparently not clear enough, is to recommend that the range be 77, not 72. A logic there is, is that GIS analysts right now, which that position is filled, is a 72, and just to put it more in line with the tax administrator's position. And I've done a lot of research around the state for small towns and counties like us, and the 77 is, I'm hoping it's adequate enough to attract a planning director that's qualified. You talk, we talked about part-time hourly increases, if you will, for EMTs, and what we're recommending, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is so that we can make sure when you get to budget, which you've got a package tonight, it'll go live tomorrow, I think is what Ms. Cannon has told me. And in it, we've, we recommended to you that the EMT basic part-time go from 1229 to 1824, and the EMT paramedic part-time go from 1842 to 20.64. Those are the hourly rates, and that will put us in line with surrounding counties that we are competing with left and right. Also, for this coming year's budget, recommending a COLA of 5% across the board, if you will. And then, it was discussed, the 401K general increase to that contribution to go from 3 to 3.5%, and then over a multi-year period to raise it up to 5%, and that way, it would be equivalent, if you will, to that of law enforcement, which is already at 5%. And I know last year, a commissioner has brought up the Christmas wallets, or Christmas cards and so forth, and this year, we're recommending a flat $150, and of course, that's subject to the withholding, portions of like, just like a regular salary check would be. Right now, the longevity cap that the county has in place is $1,600. We're recommending that that be boosted to $200 to $200. That would be another $36,700 and some odd dollars. The Christmas wallet is $65,500 and change. The 401K increase that I recommended, some of that would depend on the number of employees, but right now, that would be just under $60,000. The COLA would be another $836,000. So, and then, of course... So, and, and of course, the, the peer review that, that you all have asked me about, Larry, Larry Newton, our, our tax administrator, talked about the last time, that didn't recommend a mapper at all. It didn't address a mapper position. Now, uh, I've talked to also our GIS, uh, analyst, uh, Mr. Addison, and he says he can handle that mapping, because mostly what it does is to do property splits. Uh, so what I'm recommending as opposed to a mapper is what they did recommend, which is, which is an appraiser. As a matter of fact, they addressed, if you go back and look at it, they addressed the currents, the, the current position structure, as well as what their recommended was, and they overall recommended that we work to get three appraisers that will also be trained in other areas in that department. And we can't do it in all one year, so that's why I'm saying that we'll phase that in. Uh, there are some expenditures or some costs that's gonna be in the budget that you will see when you get it, and you talk about it on, on June 4th. Uh, the local government retirement rate increase is going up, we have no control over that, that's state mandated. Uh, health insurance rate, that's going up as well, so those are other costs that we have to incur. Um, and, uh, we'll do some of that by using, as, as, uh, Mr. Zhang mentioned earlier in his presentation on the audit, which I was really proud to see, will be coming from the undesignated fund balance, if you will. So I'm hoping that, and that we can discuss any or all of these, or you can approve them now, or, or you can wait and do it whenever on June 4th, but I'm hoping to get a positive indication that we can move forward with them.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to propose is to have a budget workshop the first week of June. We've not, we had our small meetings, just interview type things, but, um, I'd like to see what the Board would think if we could have a, a budget workshop during that first week of June, which is, uh, starting on the 3rd, uh, just to see, we've had those before, and I think they're very productive, and all the things that you say sound good, and I imagine that they'll be fine, I just think that there's a lot of stuff there.
Mr. Chairman, I support that recommendation. We really need to get together as a Board, even just for two hours, to go through this. I, I'm not prepared to approve anything tonight, but I certainly am supportive of the things that the county manager has presented.
And, and remember, the first meeting in June is June 4th.
And, and if we have this maybe, in the past, I think our workshops have been during the day, I think they have been, I'm not, don't, for me, for sure, but, uh, we may not wanna have it on the day of the meeting, of our regular Board meeting, but the 3rd, the 5th, the 6th, one of those three days would, uh, would be fine.
It's, it's fine if you, whatever, whatever the Board decides will do.
Can we not have it outside? Do it fine?
Whatever the Board agrees to is fine with me. Uh, I can do it the evening or during the day, it's fine with me.
It's all right with the Board.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I signed up for the job, I'll be here. So, um, okay, so do we need to set a date tonight?
I'd like to, if it's okay with y'all.
Okay.
And Commissioner Little, you read, you say 5 o'clock is your, is the Board?
Sure.
So you, do you wanna have it before our June 4th meeting?
Seems like that'd be good, if we did it on Monday, 3rd.
Okay, so, yeah, Monday, June 3rd, we'll have a budget workshop meeting. Uh, and you said 5 o'clock, is that good? Okay. So 5:00 PM, June 3rd.
And Mr. Chairman, there are a lot of HR-related matters here. I'd like to have the HR manager present.
Okay. If you can.
How about the finance director?
Uh, I think the finance director should also be present.
Just asking.
Some of these things, if we could get a summary of the total amounts on some of those for that night?
Definitely can have you that, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion around the, the HR policy? I do wanna commend you, uh, Mr. Saltzman, on addressing these issues. I think, uh, I think there's some good, uh, changes in here, and I, I hope that helps us attract and retain some employees for our county.
That's the biggie, because the last year, when there were some adjustments made for, uh, for our law enforcement, um, um, office, it, it, and other counties, I guess, observed it, because we're, we're not working in a vacuum, and, uh, I won't say they retaliated, but they reciprocated by, by raising their own, so we know we're all competing for the same pool, whether it's law enforcement, EMS, uh, DSS, I mean, we, we all know that, and there's a limited, um, if you had asked Ms. Sharp while she was here, since she represents the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the pool of, of, of different department heads particularly, and, 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 and assistants, deputy department heads, is getting smaller and smaller, not just in North Carolina, but across the country, so there's a lot of, uh, recruitment going on.
Yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll appreciate what, uh, what, what the Board's done.
All right.
And I'm, I'm hoping that you've got a letter in there that we, if, if not, I'll give it to you verbally, and then I can also send it to you. We had an analysis done from a risk perspective of the airport, and it's, uh, of a low risk, which is good, and I guess part of that has to do with our approaches, uh, not having obstacles, and those that are, and believe it or not, the, the water tanks here that are lighted are, are part, they're in that, uh, flight path, if you will, and so if we didn't have them lighted, we'd have to light them, which obviously is something that we, that this Board, or previous Boards have done years ago. So just letting you know that that's, that's, uh, something that we don't have to worry about right now, unless there's changes made by the FAA and NCDOT Aviation Division. But we're in compliance with them. Uh, Mike Sessions gave you an update a little while ago on that US 74 sewer line, it's 75% complete, which I was proud to see last Friday when we got that analysis. Uh, you ha, you have something at your place that looks very similar to this. It's a contract, uh, from Willow Products Company to do cell block A at the, uh, at the jail, that blocking system, and, and it is like $186,000 and change, uh, to be, I'll have that exact number here in a second for you, but it's $186,000. We'd like to recommend an approval. Uh, the chief deputy's not here in Orissa Sheriff, but it's something that they have been, in Wendell Small, our facilities director, who also handles, uh, our parks and rec, he's done a great job in working with these folks. So it's $186,345, taxes included, and that's broken down between materials and labor, so we do like to get that, that tonight, so we can get that contract underway.
And, and I've had a couple tours of the jail, um, and I, and Mr. Birdie's attended a couple of the tours with us as well, and I, I think we all agree that the jail's in a rough shape, and I'd like to make the motion that we take your recommendation for that contract and go ahead and approve it tonight.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, contract for the, um, jail by Commissioner Bricken, we have a second by Commissioner Gatewood. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'd like to still have a discussion on the planning director position that this Board had asked me in the previous meeting to, to, to find, but we've got a job description, and, uh, we had started the advertisement, but when there was a question as to whether or not what the salary range was, and I understand that, so to be clear, uh, I knew that the previous planner for the county, not planning director, which was a different position, was a 72, and as I said, this person's gonna be responsible for, with our GIS analysts, and will also be responsible for our building inspections department, which pretty much lines up with the, uh, the predominance, if you will, of practices across the state in North Carolina and across the nation. So I'd like to, to ask the Board to consider that and, and approve it. If you do approve it tonight, then we can advertise this, such, starting hopefully tomorrow or, or Thursday.
Mr. Manager, what is the salary range for salary grade 77?
77, it will be, uh, 63, 614, uh, top out at 105, 201.
Thank you.
And it's the same job description as we had last, uh?
Same job description that you had at the last.
Yep, the only change is that grade, the salary grade, okay.
Uh, I would make a motion that we accept that 77 grade for the planning director.
Second.
And I've got a motion to, uh, change the planning directors, um, from a grade 72 to a grade 77. Um, motion by Commissioner Bricken, second by Commissioner Gatewood. Any discussion on that?
But we have to remember, they're creating a new department, they're not just coming into an existing position, so they're gonna really have a lot of responsibility, so I think it's a good move.
And, and it's my understanding that we're already getting some inquiries, if you will, I'm not sure we've had any actual applications, uh, uh, put into our labs yet, but, uh, relative to making some changes to these zoning ordinance, uh, particularly the map that was just adopted a few weeks ago.
Yes, sir, I know there will be some changes, uh, coming as soon as we get a, uh, director in place, so, all right, um, no other discussion? Well, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's done, it's been done. Yeah, it's, oh, yeah. It's just recommending, I don't, I, there's not a pre-audit stamp on here, but, but our finance director has pre-audited, I don't sign any, matter of fact, I got three or four items that were brought to me late this afternoon, and she was tied up with Ms. Sharp and also Mr. Zhang about tonight's meeting and going forward, planning our 24 audits, and so I said, I, I don't sign anything until it's pre-audited, I wanna make sure the money's in the budget and hasn't been already spent.
Yes, sir. The, okay, so, um, anything else, uh, under the manager's report?
Well, that, that's all I have, unless the Board has any questions.
No, any questions for the manager this time?
Uh, I have, well, I don't know if it'd be a, a Commissioner concern, I guess it'd be a good time to bring it up in the manager's report. Um, I've had a lot of questions about the great grant for our internet and our networking capabilities, and since I'm not much of a computer guy and don't necessarily understand it that well, is there any way, since that's an enormous amount of money that we're getting ready to launch into, that we may have some type of attachment on our website that could kinda update people on what the process there is and where we are and what we're planning on doing?
I'll, I'll check with our IT folks and see if there is something they can put on there, uh, Ms. Cannon, I'll be glad to, uh, bring that up, uh, in the next day or so with them.
'Cause that's gonna be real encouraging, and, uh, a lot of people are interested in what, what we're getting ready to do, and that's a part of the infrastructure that I certainly don't know how to answer.
Uh, and to be brutally honest, it's, it's, I, I know it's called the last mile, which technically is not the last mile, uh, because the, the way it's defined, it, 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 it's, it's very, um, loose, if you will, it's such that if they're looking at it from an enumeration district, which, which is, which is a small part of a census tract, that if one house there is served, they consider the entire part served, which we know is not true. They could be, have people next door, down the street, and it's, that's not, so, it might not hurt if we could get someone from Spectrum who's supposed to be our, our big partner and who's putting in more, more money than the county's putting in as a match, to see if we could get someone there to come and talk about the great grant and, and, and what their plans are moving forward, if it's the Board's pleasure.
That'd be great, 'cause I think if I remember correctly, the total amount of funding that's being supplied to help us is about $14 million?
It is around 14 million, yes.
So a $14 million project in Anson County ought to be something that people have access to hear.
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay, um, anything else for the manager?
Um, Mr. Manager, could you give us an update, please, on the flea market in Burnsville?
Uh, I don't really have an update, I know the plans and specifications are still being developed, uh, I don't think our fire marshal nor our building inspector have received any final plans spec yet, so it's, it's, it's still in the makings, which, and until they can, they can get that and get it approved, then they can't open up, is my understanding.
And have we, we received a report from DOT regarding the project?
No, no, sir, we have not received a report from DOT, and based on my last email from someone in DOT, they will, they won't do a traffic study on a project like this, they're gonna require, depending on the number of cars that are expected per day at the flea market, they'll require the private sector to conduct one, and I, I think, uh, I'm doing this from memory, is that DOT's cutoff is if they exceed 3,000 cars a day, which is a lot of vehicles, and I know that doesn't make citizens happy, but, uh, particularly for the location and the size of, of the size of the roadways there, but, uh, but I think that is what I recall.
I, I do recall, you have 3,000, uh, trips per day.
Per day.
One last thing, if you don't mind.
Sir.
For our budget workshop, I'd like to know, maybe we could get a summary of the remaining project funds that are left over from projects, 'cause, um, the, we, we've, I think we still have some project money left over in projects that were complete with some leftover money, and if we could get a summary of any of that, 'cause I know we've found money before that was, um...
You, you remember well, because we did find some, uh, some funds that were left over in, is water and or sewer projects that have been, uh, it wasn't lost, it was just there, and, and somebody forgot that, uh, to, to take a look at it, so Holly and I discussed it, and after, you've already put it back into where it should be, which would be in the water systems fund balance and the sewer system fund balance.
Yeah, and go back into the enterprise fund, 'cause I think this study has some information, and since it looks like it's 200 pages long, maybe y'all could summarize it.
Take.
We'll definitely take a look at it and see if, uh, at the next meeting, whenever we talk about budget, we can have that info for you.
And some remaining project money sometimes has limitations on how long you're allowed to hold on to it, so I just wanna make sure we're not missing any deadlines.
That's true, and, and one of the big ones, that's the reason the Board's selected to do the revenue replacements, uh, uh, Avenue, if you will, for the ARPO money, because that deadline's about a year, it's not even a year and a half away now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for the manager tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Um, Chairman's Report, I've got one thing I wanted to, uh, announce for tonight. Um, Anson County will be holding a Memorial Day remembrance ceremony on Monday, May 27th, and it'll be held 10 o'clock, uh, 10 AM at Veterans Memorial Park, um, in Wade, at Wade's Borough Park. Um, the ceremony will be followed by refreshments. Um, uh, this will be, uh, conducted by our new, uh, Veteran Service Officer, Ms. Courtney Powellmore. So any questions, please contact her. So that's all I have for the report tonight.
One, one quick thing, that, that regard, the Belk Building, which is just down, uh, uh, Green Street from where we're sitting right now, the, as you know, the windows in the front are more or less vacant, and so since Memorial Day is coming up in a few weeks, I have asked, uh, our Veteran Services Officer, is she in the Veterans Council to take a look at it and maybe put some type of sense? Memorial Day really isn't, um, a, a celebration like, like, say, the 4th of July, it, originally it was a day of remembrance, and so she's agreed that, uh, they're gonna work together and put us some type of display in there that will bring that to people's attention, and it will also work, you know, with the flags and so forth at the courthouse.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. All right, um, moving right along, Commissioner Concerns, have any concerns tonight?
Uh, I was just gonna ask, um, for an update on the French drainage system, where we see a lot of work going on there, I just wanna see how we're doing with it.
I had a question on that today, because there's some folks planning a celebration for June 15, in, in advance of, uh, Juneteenth, and, uh, our contractor says, it says if the weather cooperates, which up until this point, it really hasn't, 'cause it's rained about every couple days, as every farmer in the county knows, and we've had to pump water out, but, uh, it is moving. The inside of the, um, Belk Building basement has already been sealed, and just as soon as it dries out, then what we're gonna do is, um, is scour the outside, seal that one, then the work will go into, to put the French drain in, and, uh, we either, we had a choice of either taking the water out the back of the Belk Building or, or the side of it, or out the front, so we're gonna take it out the front, which means it will be into the, um, town's sewer system on, uh, Green Street, and if the weather cooperates again, it'll, we'll be through within three weeks.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you for that update.
Yes, sir.
Any other, uh, Commissioner Concerns? All right. Hearing none, um, I don't think we have a closed session need for tonight, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Nope, I'm sorry, we're gonna recess this meeting until our June 3rd, uh, budget workshop.
Would, I ask one question. Since the audio and the video were down early on during our, uh, presentation, um, I know that the Anson Record, um, was gonna try to monitor that online to do a story, it, would it be appropriate if we would give Ms. Sharp or Mr. Zhang's phone number to... it be appropriate if we would give Ms. Sharp or Mr. Zhang's phone number to the Anson Record, they could, uh, interview then? Would that... You'll get them, they, they will come back up, 'cause, 'cause that's, they were planning on covering it, but they weren't gonna be here physically today, so they'll have access to that? Okay, good, okay.
So at this time, I need a motion to recess the meeting.
Make a motion to recess?
Second.
Yeah, uh, yes, okay, so we have a motion to recess the meeting until June 3rd at 5:00 PM, uh, for a budget workshop. Uh, motion by Commissioner Bricken, second by Commissioner Gatewood. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Thank you.